Good afternoon. I'm calling to order the Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works on Tuesday, July 2, 2024. Council members in attendance include Councilmember Noeva Kamina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Salahudin. Online, we have Councilmember Fields and Council President Kritzler, and I'm the Presiding Officer, Councilmember Stewart. We have nine items on the agenda today, folks, so we are going to go ahead and get started with some visitors from the Parks team. The first item on the agenda is the For Culture Art Grant Approval. In introducing the item, we have Director Lorraine Hamilton.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for letting us come to 2PW today. We are bringing one item forward for you to be placed on the consent agenda. To present this item, I have with me my cultural arts supervisor, Chris Weber.
Thank you, Director Hamilton. Thank you, Council, and thanks for letting me be here today as a visitor. I'm here seeking approval from City Council to authorize the mayor to accept a For Culture Grant contract in the amount of $18,000 for use in funding arts projects, including the Fifth Annual Public Art Intensive Eastside Workshop and the temporary public art exhibits at the Second Annual Downtown Redmond Art Walk that will happen this September, and request that this be added to the consent agenda at the July 16 regular business meeting.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, Director Hamilton. Are there questions from the Council about this item? Seeing no questions, I'll just go ahead and say for the public's benefit, one of the things that will be benefited by this particular grant is our Downtown Redmond Art Walk on September 19 in the evening, so be sure to come back and join us on September 19. And thanks so much, Chris. We'll have this on consent on the 16th.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Item number two on our agenda today is approval of the 2024-2025 Annual ORCA Card Contract Renewal. Introducing this item will be Linnea Taylor, and it looks like Philly Marsh will also be joining us. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Linnea Taylor is our city's program administrator for traffic demand management. She'll be presenting the 2024-2025 ORCA Contract Renewal Agreement between the city of Redmond and King County Metro. This agreement has been in place since 2009, when ORCA first started. The program supports the city as an employer in complying with requirements of Washington State Commute Trip Reduction Law and the city's mobility management program requirements, as well as setting an example within the business community. We are looking for approval to put this on the consent agenda for July 16.
Hello, everyone. As Philly mentioned, I'm here today to discuss the city's ORCA contract renewal for 2425, and this covers employee transit and van-pull rides. We're still using the pay-as-you-go payment structure that started in 2020, which means we receive monthly invoices for transit rides taken as they happen. In conjunction with the two-line opening in April, we've decided to open ORCA card usage for both personal and commute trips for employees, hoping to get people comfortable with taking light rail and know that it's a great connection into work, especially with the 545 into downtown. You can still get there. We don't have to stop in Overlake. So far, we haven't received any invoices yet that would reflect this change, but I will be monitoring and tracking that, and we plan to pilot this through the end of the year. So this year, so far, we've spent about $21,000 in ORCA fees, still with the renewal in August, so I'll have a few invoices yet to come. And transit and van-pull fees were about evenly split. So renewal of this contract would ensure transportation benefit for employees, as well as keep us in compliance with both state laws and city goals. Total cost for the contract, I don't anticipate to exceed $35,000, and the contract renewal cost was included in the adopted budget for the commuter assistance office. And again, looking for this item to go on approval of the consent agenda on July 16. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions from the Council on this item? Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. Thank you, Linnea. And no question, just a comment is that there's a few times where I get excited about budget lines increasing, and since this is a pay-as-as-we-go, I'm looking forward to this line increasing a bit, especially now that we've got the two-line on and as we really lean into our commuting decreasing. So, thank you.
Councilmember Salahudin?
Yeah, thank you so much, and definitely echoing Councilmember Noeva Kamina on that. Quick question on the total cost of services. I think you mentioned that it's forecasted not to exceed a maximum of $35,000. The memo says $30,000. Which one is a closer estimate?
$30,000.
Awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, everyone.
No worries.
My fun notes were a little mishap. $30,000, yes.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
That was actually one of my questions as well, so thanks for the clarity. And just really excited that we're opening this up for personal use as well. I think that's a great move and really encouraging folks to use the light rail and use transit is a good call, so appreciate the forward-thinking.
Any other questions from the Council?
I'll go ahead and ask one follow-up on the employees opening up the cards for personal use. That's a pretty standard practice for employers, especially ones who want to remain competitive in this area. Do you have a sense of moving forward, what the, will we be able to stay under, I mean, the $21,000 to $30,000? That's actually not a very big jump. So what do you kind of anticipate the trajectory of that to be?
Hopeful, again, for an increase, just like you mentioned. I'm just hoping for people to get comfortable and keep going. I think I'll have a better estimate once I get a few invoices to show what that looks like, just kind of talk around the office. Everyone's excited. I hear about people riding into Bellevue all the time, so I'm hopeful that it just continues to increase. And I know with new employees coming onboard, this is something that, like you mentioned, people expect and are excited to use, so I could see that, you know, growing. In the past, our budget used to be around $80,000. I could see us increase, you know, 40, 50. That's what I'm hopeful for.
Great. Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth.
All right, one more question. I know that Sound Transit is changing the modeling for their pricing to a per-trip instead of a destination-based. Was that inclusive of, in your modeling for pricing?
Yep.
Okay.
It was included.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Council, are there any objections to this item going to consent on July 16? Okay, thank you, and I really appreciate that, Linnea. Thanks for being with us. I also realized I did forget to ask if there was any opposition to the first item going to consent. Were there any opposition to the culture grant? Great. Okay, we'll have that on July 16 also. Wonderful. Item number three on our agenda today is Adoption of the 2024 Economic Development Strategic Plan. Introducing this item is Director of Planning and Community Development, Carol Helen.
Thank you. Council Presiding Officer Stewart, good evening, Councilmembers. So the title is, this agenda option, item is the Adoption of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. In July of 2023, Council approved the consultant contract with community attributes to work with staff to develop the city of Redmond's very first strategic economic development plan. We were last in front of Council in March, on March 26, to discuss the strategies for each of the six focus areas, and staff received positive Council feedback at that time. And since that time, staff has worked with the internal kind of program administrators to confirm the exciting actions included in the plan. And with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Philly for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Carol, and good afternoon, members of Council. We're really excited and pleased to present the strategic plan for adoption. The planning process really helped us align and confirm direction for our small but mighty economic development program. We've been working on this plan for about a year, and the process included a robust internal staff as well as community engagement that really helped shape the strategies and actions included in this plan. We came to Council with a data analysis last November and then back in March with the strategies. Additionally, we did have some Council briefings with the actions included in this plan for those of you who were interested. After you affirmed the direction of the strategies in March, like Director Helen mentioned, we met with over 11 different internal programs to review, validate, and garner enthusiasm on the actions within the plan. The attachments include the final plan, the appendix, which is very robust, as well as the Council comment inclusion tracking, where we have responded to all the Council comments we've heard over the past year, as well as where they can be referenced within that final plan. Staffs are very excited to start on implementation, and we will be bringing routine reports to Council to be able to report out on the progress of action implementation, as well as those key performance indicators, as well as, you know, a continuous loop of garnering feedback and direction, insights on the continued development and implementation of this five-year plan. We are requesting this item be placed on the July 16 consent agenda, and we open it up to questions or feedback.
Thank you so much. Questions or comments from the Council? Okay. Council, how about the matrix that was included in the materials? Are there unanswered questions or lingering questions there? And while we think about that, we'll go to Council President Kritzler.
Yeah, thank you. I was wondering, are we, I was a little confused on the schedule. So is the request right now to go straight to consent after this meeting?
Correct.
Because we haven't seen this since the study session when we saw kind of the vision goals and strategies, so I do think it would be great to be able to share more with the public about kind of the full document, but I don't know if my colleagues agree as well. I guess I had missed that with this plan.
I won't speak for others, but we did have opportunities to meet with the staff, and I know that in the one I attended, Council Vice President Forsyth and Councilmember Salahudin were also on the line, and that was a chance for more questions and ideation. I'll leave your question about sharing with the public on the table. Thoughts or questions from the Council? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I think we did see this in a larger context, so I think we'd already received a bunch of great response from community members about it. I don't see much substantial differentiation at this point, so I'm happy to vote on it on consent on the 16th and appreciate all the hard work.
Other feedback or questions? Councilmember Salahudin?
I agree with Council Vice President Forsyth. And just, I guess, for anyone listening, could you sort of recap that level of community engagement and who you've reached out to in this process so that, you know, there might be a little more comfort in moving forward to move to consent?
Sure. So first, we started with a landscape scan of all the work that had been done for Redmond 2050 and other outreach efforts and studies that we did. So we gathered all that and then based some data analysis off of that. And then we did a robust feedback loop on our kind of direction and focus areas that we had. So we did a survey where we surveyed all of our businesses that we have licenses and contacts for. We didn't get 100% response, but we did provide the opportunity. We also did six focus groups, and let me step back. That survey, we did translate the call for the survey, as well as the actual survey language, into six different languages. And then we've also had an ongoing "Let's Engage" page where we've posted the strategies and invited conversation for that as well. And I'm always open and happy to talk, and again, it will be a group effort implementing this, so always invite the community, partners, et cetera, to reach out so we can align efforts.
That's perfect. Thank you, and I really appreciate the survey responses and the level of depth in which you asked the questions, really focusing on, you know, what the business needs are and what we can offer, you know, through this plan. And I also want to really call out the spotlights, because you really did research on regionally what's going on, and it's really good to see how we can be a best-case model in all these different fields, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Council President Kritzler?
Thank you. So I guess coming back to what I had initially asked, I guess I apologize if I misunderstood. I thought the last time that we saw this that we would have another chance in public to be able to hear once you came back with the full report, since we did only see the kind of some of the higher-level vision goals and strategies when we saw it last time. So anyway, I appreciate what's in here, and I'm not saying that I actually have a ton of questions. I just would love for us to be able to share out with the community, you know, some of the really innovative things that are inside of this plan. There's some really exciting ideas, and I think one of the things that I would love to hear from you today is just in terms of impacts of things that we would want to consider for the budget for the upcoming cycle, are there any things that you see as immediate needs that jump out, that are new things that are in this plan that you can let people know or things that you'll be coming to us with related to this?
I think, so I think first, just addressing your first point, we will be posting the final plan online and doing some news releases around it, because we do want this to be a storytelling document for the community and the community to understand the direction we're going and be part of that. So I think that will help with that kind of awareness and continued invitation for conversation. In terms of kind of what the folk, again, this is a five-year plan, but what we see as opportunities to focus on in the very near term are definitely around the district development, and that's based on the fact that we now have two light rail stations open. We're anticipating two more, hopefully within six months, so really being able to capitalize on that opportunity to build excitement with stakeholders in those districts and kind of realize them with branding, with convenings of businesses, and business support and everything that kind of goes within, under that district development piece. The other thing that we've already started on, working on, is just being able to get better business contacts, a better business contact database, and really starting to build those relationships with all of our businesses across the board. So that's something that we are doing some internal research on right now and hope to have launched very soon to kind of provide that foundation and basis for ongoing awareness of relationships and support of our businesses.
That's great, and I would just highlight, I think, one thing that I would love to see us moving on in this plan that I think is so great is the emphasis on supporting our community-based organizations, to be able to reach out to some of the different cultural groups in our community, to be able to support various ethnic businesses and the development of those, since I think a lot of the time, the community-based organizations we work with, they apply for funding to us through the human services grants, but sometimes their work with businesses doesn't quite fit there. They have been sometimes able to do things through one Redmond, but I think that's an area where I feel like that bullet point in this plan is an area where we could really expand and just think creatively about how we better partner with those who can do some of that great outreach to support, especially in places like Overlake, the development of the intercultural district. So, thank you, and I appreciate all the work on this plan. Super excited to pass it.
Thank you so much, Council President Kritzler. I just wanted to note that on the budget process, we are, you may recall that when we brought this plan forward, we wanted to make sure that it had direction for us to look at during this five years, but obviously, we won't have the capacity to do all of the things, and that we also just wanted to remind Council that we do it as resource becomes available. So there are many plans where that we are in the process of looking at moving forward that Council has identified as priorities, and so we're doing that cross-departmentally while this plan will be part of that conversation. There are so many others. So the budget proposal that will, the budget that the mayor will ultimately put together will essentially balance all of those priorities that the Council have put on the table and will bring something forward, but there will certainly be some recommendation out of this plan.
Thank you, Director Helen. Mr. Fields?
Yeah, I have complement to this plan. I appreciate the fact that the city took this effort to do it. One of the things I have addressed over the years is I've always been concerned about our sales tax revenue being relatively flat compared to our growth and inflation, and I see that we're going to measure that. And our economic health as a city is certainly tied to sales tax revenue. When will Council see more specific measures and expectations from this plan? I see the layout, I see the construct that you've put in place and what you're going to measure, but when will we actually see some specific performance measures and specifically around expected sales tax revenue?
We hope this is the start of an ongoing conversation that we can have with Council on economic development and hope to bring this to Council on a routine basis as schedules allow, but we will be putting together those KPIs, key performance metrics, and definitely have sales tax as one of those that we'll be reporting out so we can see what those trend lines are. We are aware that in the retail context, and in fact, we were just having conversations today on kind of creative ways we can help support our small retail businesses in Redmond so we can continue and grow that health and vibrancy of the mix of retail here.
So from that answer, next year, this year, you expect to have some forward-thinking goals and measurements?
I hope to bring something back by Q1 of next year. I know you guys have a very busy schedule with Redmond 2050 and the budget here at the end of the year, but hopefully I can sneak it in Q1.
Thank you, Philly. I'll just jump in with my comments, mostly of gratitude. Thank you so much, Philly and team, for all your work on this. It is the first-of-its-kind plan for the city of Redmond, and what an awesome tool that's going to be for this Council as we take on some major decision-making in the next few years. I'm particularly excited about the placemaking that is directed in this plan and how using economic development strategies can help us achieve that throughout the city. Council, are there any objections to this item going to consent on the 16th of July?
No objection, just a very quick comment, and that is thank you for bringing childcare into view. It's something we deal with on a national level, and we always talk about local government being so instrumental in our day-to-day living as communities. So to see childcare on there, and since our average age is in the mid-30s, and this is a plan for the next five years, how crucial it was to have that included, so thank you for that hard work. No objections.
Okay. Seeing none, we look forward to adopting this on our consent agenda on July 16. Thank you so much for your wonderful work.
Thank you.
Item number four on our agenda today is Recommendations on Amendments to the Redmond Municipal and Zoning Code for Conformance with State Legislation, Senate Bill 5290 and House Bill 1293. Staying at the table with us are Director Carol Helen and Kim Dietz. Welcome. Welcome back.
Thank you again, and today we'll be providing a brief introduction to the zoning and municipal code amendments, and those are for consistency with state Senate Bill 5290 and House Bill 1293. Those are both focused on streamlining our permitting process and removing kind of barriers associated with design review. At your July 16 meeting, staff will present the Technical Committee and Planning Commission recommendation on the amendments that will be coming before you, and they'll involve those refinements to permitting and design review procedures. We are in the process of correcting one typographical error that Kim will talk about, and we are actually adding one more small addendum that we will have you review prior to your action in October. Representing this item is Kim Dietz, who's joining me at the table. We also have Tim McHarg in the audience, principal planner in Planning and Community Development, who may also participate, and Todd Rawlings, our Process Improvement Manager, has also been a contributor to this item. So with that, Kim, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Carol. This series of amendments is required by state legislation, and it needs to be enacted and implemented by cities and counties, if that applies, by January 1, 2025. It involves streamlining in accordance with the legislation, including updates for comformance with timeframes, with public meetings, fee management, objective review, and reporting back to the state. Your meeting materials for this evening and then going forward do include the Planning Commission's recommendation on the zoning code amendments, and then the Technical Committee recommendation is included for recommendations on municipal code amendments as well. They also recommended on zoning code, but that did go through the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission regarding the addendum. The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing and make a recommendation on July 31, and this is an addendum to their recommendation that you already have. It's a small piece of code, but we do look forward to providing the draft of that to you in your next packet. And we also look forward to any questions today that can help us prepare material for your July 16 meeting. During that time, we will be providing a staff report, and then we are looking forward to a September 10 study session and October 15 business meeting for your action on this package.
Kim, could you repeat the September date for the study session? September?
Yes, September 10 is the study session, and then October 15 for the business meeting and your action.
Thank you. So at this time, we are collecting questions for the staff report on the 16th?
Yes, if you do have any at this time.
Are there questions from the Council? Council President Kritzler?
Thank you, and, you know, great to see these items come forward and for our city to be doing our part to streamline our permitting processes and bring down the costs of developing in our city, hopefully bringing down the costs for housing as well in turn. I think one of the questions that will come up the most probably from the public is the omission of the Design Review Board, so if during your staff report, you could speak in layman's terms to explain, you know, how we'll ensure that we'll still have robust review of the design and the look and feel of our buildings that go up in our community without a design review board. I think that that would be helpful, just because I imagine we're going to get some questions around that in particular from the public. If you could explain that during your staff report, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions from the Council? Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. One of the anticipated results was to require reimbursement of portion of permit fees, just to know what ballpark that that would be looking at, if there's some way to forecast that.
Yes, I believe that the legislation does provide the parameters for that.
Councilmember Salahudin?
Yeah, just a quick question. Would love to understand just the communications plan of, you know, when changes are implemented, how we're reaching those out to developers, community members, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I think for the conversation on the 16th, too, just a high level of what the changes are and what of the changes that are in the packet are the state mandated and what potentially came out of the conversation through the Planning Commission, if any. Thanks.
Yes.
That's a great segue to a couple of my questions, so I'll go ahead and hop in. It was, I found it difficult from the materials to tease out what was the state mandating and what was a change management process. We were probably headed down on our own regard, and oftentimes, Redmond is a little bit ahead on some things. It would just be helpful to understand that a little bit better. Where might we actually be going a bit beyond eventually or in line with the legislation that was adopted? And then I would like to understand the impact to staff and what that will look like, just in terms of staff capacity in a city that is continuing to develop quite quickly. Other questions from the Council? Council President Kritzler?
Thank you. Great questions from my colleagues. Just one follow-up to those and to my initial question is, in reading what the state mandates specifically around review, just to follow up on what the others said, could you clarify when you're talking about the decision around the Design Review Board, whether that specifically is mandated or if there were some other options and whether we decided this was the best way, since it seems like there's supposed to be at least up to one public review? So, you know, what that will look like, I think would be great to explain how that is and how some cities might accommodate that with the Design Review Board versus not. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I'm going to move us along for time, but if the Council has additional questions, be sure to submit those to Director
sure to submit those to Director Holland and Kim for our conversation on the 16th. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We'll turn now to the Public Works portion of the agenda. Item number five is final construction contract with James W. Fowler Company and Construction Acceptance for the wastewater pump station 12 replacement project. With us at the table, we have Deputy Director Vangie Garcia. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Excuse me. We can do kind of five and number six if you'd like to speed things along.
We usually find it's best to segment the conversation. We get a little confused, and anyway, just better to go one at a time.
Trying to keep things moving, so that's fine. Number five is the final construction contract for wastewater pump station number 12, and it's also to accept construction, the construction. And this contract, we had to settle that I think we've, the council understands the situation, and we would like to request this item go to consent on July 16th.
Thank you, Deputy Director Garcia. And so for the council, we're kind of doing three things here, because the budget needs to be increased, the final contract needs to be approved, and the construction needs to be accepted. There was a couple of beautiful photos, a dramatic finish to a really important project, but it's nice and clean and tidy and wrapped up really well. So questions, starting with Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I was able to jog my memory on the details around this, so I appreciate the context there, and I'm good to approve both five and six, noting that we had saved some money on item five on the other wastewater projects, so that kind of makes up for what happened on pump 12. So I'm good on both. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Okay. Are there any objections to moving this item with wastewater pump station 12 replacement to consent on July 16th? Onward we go. Thank you so much. So Deputy Director Garcia, you're sticking with us for item number six. I'll just read it for the public. Approve final contract with award construction and to accept construction for wastewater lift stations five, six, eight, 11, and 15 for the equipment replacement project.
Yes, and so I won't repeat all the numbers, but this is actually a good ending to the story. So another three-item thing of final contract, accept construction, and we'd like the project to go, this item to go to consent on the July 16th. So this project saves some money, so it's under contract, so another great end to a long saga of station, lift stations. So that's a great story for Public Works. They've been working for a long time on a series, and I think this is actually the end. So Mike can verify what I just said, but this is a great story for the city.
Wonderful. Are there questions from the council? Okay, I'll just jump in to add a couple. I absolutely had the same word in my notes, saga, but saga complete. It's a wrap. So a six-year project, wrapping up early. Thank you so much to the many team members and former council members involved in this project. Wastewater lift stations keep a bunch of things running so that residents don't have to think about them and are really an important piece of infrastructure to keep running. So thank you. Any objections to this item going to consent on the 16th of July? Okay, we'll do that. We have a lot of milestones in this next consent agenda, so congratulations, everyone. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, we'll move now to item number seven, which is the proposed fee program for the extended use of right-of-way. And with us for this item, we have Director of Public Works, Erin Burt. Welcome.
Hi. I'm also going to be joined by Paul Cho, who is our City Traffic Engineer and Head of TOSE, which is Transportation Operations Safety Engineering Mouthful. So the first item that we're presenting to council for consideration, and our intent is to bring this to a formal study session in August on 8/13, and then potential adoption later in the fall before, hopefully, this taking effect in January 1 of 2024. So the right-of-way within the city that Public Works manages is a public good, and as the city continues to grow and more and more pressures come upon that right-of-way, not only for construction staging, closure of the right-of-way for use by businesses, for example, with cafe seating. And as the city continues to densify, we are finding that as projects get proposed, it can be up to a year, for example, that in a new building being built, that sidewalks are closed for the use by pedestrians, or even right-of-way streets are closed. A great example of this on 85th here, there was a construction project, was it 85th and 163rd?
164th.
164th, a travel lane was closed probably for about 18 months, and traffic diversion along those lines. So when I came on board about two years ago, I recognized this to begin with, and earlier this year, I asked staff to begin to look at this issue. What do other cities do when it comes to charging for the closure of right-of-way and kind of what have been the policy outcomes and impacts of that? For a number of years, our sister city, well, I guess Seattle is in a sister city, the big city across the lake, for a number of years, charges for the closure of sidewalks and streets during construction. So we took a look at this, took a look at what some of our local comparable cities have been done, and we have found in two, basically, most local cities, charge for cafe seating and the use of the right-of-way, and then they also have some fee structure in place for the closure of sidewalks or temporary closure of streets in conjunction with construction. So what we are proposing is a fee structure for the long-term use of the right-of-way, so anything beyond a two-week period, we would charge. One of the things I do want to point out that we learned during COVID, when we instigated a cafe seating program, permitting program, was we are supposed to pay an excise tax on the closure of the right-of-way, and that came to our attention through a state audit. So during COVID, I believe we issued five cafe seating permits?
Seven.
Seven, thereabouts. Well, the closure, providing that cafe seating to those local businesses is a benefit, and that benefit provided to private businesses is supposed to be taxed. We didn't know that through the audit process that was brought to our attention. So what this program does as well is address this issue about paying for excise tax by a private business when the right-of-way is taken out of public use. Two components here. We would be looking at charging an annual fee calculated for the square footage used by cafe seating. So it would be two components. One, it would be a cafe feeding, excuse me, cafe seating fee for the square footage, and then there would also be a fee levied on there for the excise tax to account for that, and that would be a pass-through from us to the state that we owe. And then the other component would be for construction activities, and this would be a monthly fee that would be calculated as part of our process that we go through already, which is issuing a temporary traffic control plan. People come in as part of the construction permitting process, they need to close down a street. We would take this as that component of figuring out what would be the closure and for how long, and apply the fee accordingly to that. So as we took a look at this, the basis of the fees, as mentioned, was on our neighboring cities and the appraised land value per square foot. We, the excise tax is based on the closed area, which will be collected and remitted to the state. And then for the revenue, for the construction component, that is based on the closure of the sidewalk and/or the street. And the intent behind this, especially when we take a look at the closure of the sidewalk and the street, is to help encourage individuals that are engaging in construction processes to be more mindful of what that closure is going to be. Now, we understand, for example, in the downtown core, space is limited, construction sites need staging. But what we've recognized is that anytime you close down a travel lane, that has an impact on the citizens. And in our analysis is that if we can put a fee in place, maybe that would encourage developers to be a little bit more mindful in terms of how they're managing the right-of-way and what kind of closures they need. We understand that there will be closures required. It's the nature of construction, and it's the nature of temporary staging, but the intent is not to punish, but to help encourage and manage that right-of-way because that benefit is being taken away from not only the walking and biking public, but also the motoring public as well. Our initial estimations on revenue generation, and we're not looking at necessarily as a boon for revenue, but if you take what type of closures have happened in the past, we're anticipating that it would be about $300,000 annually that would come into the city for the construction closer. That would also include an additional, probably about $36,000, dealing with the tax remit to the state. So in your packet, and we know this is the initial presentation, and we'll have some further information for you at the study session, we talk about how we've calculated the fee, where we got it, what the comparables are, and what our process is going forward here, is to introduce this here to council tonight, field some initial questions from you, and then begin our outreach process to the community stakeholders, business community, get their feedback, and based on that feedback, come back to the study session, have a further conversation with council, and if we need to adjust, pull back, do what we need to do in the legislative sausage making, we'll take a look at that. But Public Works is pretty adamant that we feel that this is the right policy for the city to adopt, especially as we continue to densify, and we need to protect this public good. So bending your questions.
Sure. Thank you so much for the introduction, Director Burt. Council, we will go around and offer up our questions for the study session on August Council President Kritzer.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation, Director Burt. Just for the listening public, just wanted to clarify that this is a decision we have not yet made. I believe that this past week, there were city communications that initially got published saying that the city was already going, planning to implement these fees, and so I did reach out to quite a few of the specialist small businesses that would be impacted by this fee, just to let them know that we have not yet made this decision. And so hopefully, those who are listening heard the schedule for our discussions on that. And I want to express my appreciation for our comm staff that updated to make it clear that this is a proposed policy that we're still looking at. So just wanted to clarify that for everyone, and also to note, I think, in the future, before we go out with communications, it sounded like, Director Burt, you're planning to reach out to businesses. Maybe before we put communications on Facebook and create a whole page saying that we're doing something, we should definitely reach out to the businesses first, get their input, make sure that they're aware of what we're thinking about, because I think that some of them, the first time they heard about it, was seeing a city Facebook post. So just, I think we can do better with communicating with our businesses especially. But looking forward to having this study session. I think I do have concerns about the right-of-way fee for restaurants, for the streeteries, and am wondering, as you mentioned, about having to pay the excise tax. If you can just provide to us what is kind of the smallest amount that would cover exactly what we have to pay to be able to cover those spaces, I think that would be really helpful so that we can understand how necessary it is for us to leverage the fee on what is really a small number of businesses that are really taking advantage of that and have created also a public benefit for our public by being able to create some of that outdoor dining. But I am excited to see some of this going forward and being able to look at the construction right-of-way fees. Thanks. So if you can provide that information about the streeteries, that would be helpful.
Yes, absolutely, and apologies on the communication component. I've actually been gone for the past week on military duty, and I wasn't aware that anything got posted on Facebook, so that's normally not our MO to do so. But we'll definitely take that feedback, so apologies on that.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Salah Houdin and then Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Echoing Council President Kritzer in the sentiment regarding outdoor dining, and the question that I have specifically for the proposed use fees is whether we would be seeing two separate proposals coming forward when we're modifying the existing code, or is this all encompassing with both the construction and the outdoor dining?
Yeah, council members, so every year, actually, council will adopt an updated fee schedule for the city as a whole, and our intent was to put these fee increases into that legislative package as a component.
And we'll address questions at the study session on the 13th, just for time today. Councilmember Salah Houdin, did you have any other questions?
No.
Great. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I'm actually really excited to see this come forward. As you likely very much know, I've been trying to find ways that we can ensure that our sidewalks remain open during construction. I know one community in particular that I'm really excited to share this with because they've been asking for this for years and something that I've been asking for for a while now, too. So very excited to keep our sidewalks open. I will note that one of the lines in the memo said sidewalk and single lane closure, so I want to make sure that's an and/or when it comes to the actual legislation. And then similar notes on the streeteries and making sure that we're being really equitable about whatever that fee is. I can't think of one of those businesses that is not a small business, so just really making sure that this is accessible to those small business owners. Looking at what Bothell has in the packet, that seems like it might be more attainable, although there is a line that doesn't show what the next city below, so I'd be interested if both of those lines are Bothell. We can come back to that later. And then the only other thing that I'm questioning as well around the public use, so the servers come through the sidewalk into the seating area, and I've noticed on a couple occasions where there is smoking occurring on the patios, and I'm not sure if that's allowed per our code, but I would love to know if we can ensure that through this process, that that is addressed as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Burt. One of my biggest concerns about any of this is we don't have a whole lot of room on our sidewalks downtown, and I think it's going to be a real challenge to see this play out or what kind of criteria you'll use to say, when are we conflicting with some of our pedestrians or pedestrians on wheels, or people who have baby strollers, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not real clear on what, how you'll structure this and what the criteria will be for when we can do restaurant seating, sidewalk seating. I think even what we have today is a bit of a challenge with respective traffic dodging in and out, and as the city grows and there's more traffic, I see more problems. So I really want to hear what your thoughts are, your plans about approving some of these And then the only thing I can say about the developer fees is better late than never. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and hop in with a few of my questions. First question is about the feedback from the business owners who use the cafe seating. And of the eight, Mr. Cho, who were granted those permits or that use during the pandemic, I'd be curious, I'm kind of like counting on my head around town, how many are still in operation? And specifically garnering some feedback from them, that'd be great. Also, for the cafe seating option, I'm wondering if any kind of fee, if there would be an option for it to end up being seasonal in nature, and if there are areas where the city, in the city where streeteries are already allowed, and so outdoor seating is allowed and would not be subject to this fee. I'm thinking of areas on 152. I'm thinking of areas on 152nd that have those stickers out front that say this is for outdoor dining and things like that, if those would be impacted by this. And then on the construction and those kinds of closures, I wonder about those closures that, oh yeah, will be done in two weeks, and then they linger on, just making sure that they'll be knowing that any closure longer than two weeks will automatically be subject to that fee. Other questions from the council? Okay. Well, we'll look forward to the conversation in August on this one. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Item number eight on our agenda is the recycling garbage and compostable service contract with Recology King County. Deputy Director Burt and team are going to introduce this item. Thank you.
And I've been demoted, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
I'm kidding.
We see your deputies so frequently. You got good ones, they're right here.
I sometimes want to be demoted, so it's all good.
My apologies.
I appreciate it. So this is just a quick introduction, because we know there's going to be a lot more questions on this, and we are scheduled to come in front of council on the 16th to go into depth a little bit more about this. But we did provide you a package of information that outlines an executive summary, the contract that we're looking to get approved, a list of benefits that are going to be provided to the city, kind of basically above and beyond the current contract. And I just want to touch base a little bit on the background and why we're pursuing this contract right now. Erin and Mica have been doing a yeoman's job on this and working with our consultant to develop this contract and to take it out to an RFP. The last time the City of Redmond did a competitive bidding for its solid waste contract was in 1994. During the past 30 years, each time this contract has basically come up for bid, the executive at the time chose to take on those negotiations themselves and just extend and continue to extend the current waste management contract. The current contract that we're operating under is a 10-year contract with the option for a two-year extension. The contract ends at the end of 2025. We could have just added another two-year extension onto that and kind of seen where the market would take us. But in talking with staff and looking at this, what we felt was it was kind of an opportune moment to go out and test the waters and see what the market would bear for a new contract. And we hit a very sweet spot with this RFP. If you take a look at the information that was provided in the packet, you will see that some of our sister cities had some pretty considerable rate increases with their contracts, not only with Recology and Republic, but with waste management and with what we're looking at for our rate increases, which we have to expect are going to happen with cost increases in today's day and age. We came in in a very good position, especially if you look at the number of enhancements that we have been able to negotiate into the contract without exceedingly large cost incurrence to our rate pairs. We feel that this is probably one of, if not the best, solid waste contracts that any city here in the Puget Sound region or Western Washington has gotten probably in the past five to eight years. So we are very confident that once we get into the discussion next week and field your questions, and we're happy to take any pre-questions that you have now to address on that, that this is actually a win for our solid waste contract across the board. So pending your questions.
Yeah, thank you, Director Burt, and Erin and Mica for your work on this. Much appreciated. Council, we're going to have a staff report on this, sounds like on the 16th. What questions do you have for that? Council Vice President Forsyth.
I'm excited that you went out for RFP on this. This sounds like it was a huge opportunity. I know I'd had some conversations with prior staff about how lacking our current contract was, so excited to see this brought forward. My biggest question is how this will impact the community member when that swap happens, and how the hauler will message that, how we will message that. And so if you could just touch on that briefly, that would be great.
Councilmember Salahuddin?
Thank you so much. And I know Erin and I briefly touched on this the other day, and my question, just pretty hopefully straightforward, is just discussion around labor negotiations and how that would impact our union workforce with a contract shift.
Sure.
Thank you.
They have a wind to report on that. Council President Kritzler.
I think the things that would be really helpful with the study session for us and the public to be able to hear, or the study session and the staff report, would be, as Council Vice President Forsyth said, kind of what the average person in our city is going to see in terms of the impact, and what they can expect in terms of who will be picking up their garbage. I have heard that they may, and how they'll actually be paying, you know, will it be directly to Recology, or will it be through another portal, as well as, you know, the benefits that we see in switching over? There's quite a few listed, so excited to be able to hear that detailed out. And then also, for us to be able to get the details on, talk a little bit about the details on the average change in cost, and how that compares with the benefits that we'll see, as well as what was proposed anyway by our existing hauler. I think that would be helpful to know if there was a kind of comparable proposal as well from the existing hauler, but maybe with fewer benefits. So just for folks to understand, you know, what to expect in terms of the changes, what to expect in terms of the benefits, and why we think that this change is needed now. Thanks.
I will say real quick, on this RFP, there are about four players within the solid waste management community. Three are serious, one is trying to break into the business. We received three proposals, one from a legacy hauler and one from the firm trying to break into the business. And the comparables just did not compare with the Recology contract that we're going with. And one of the legacy firms chose not to bid. So across the board, we have an extremely, extremely competitive contract here, but we'll definitely go into those components.
Other questions from the council? Council Vice President Forsyth?
I'm just, I'm sure you're going to do this already, but just emphasize the contract enhancements, like reading through this, it's pretty impressive, because there's a lot of things that people are now paying for other services that this contract will cover, so I think that's going to be huge for the listening public to catch.
Councilmember Salahuddin?
Thank you. And just to note on the time constraints, if we could get a little more detail on the beginning of the contract potentially with rental trucks instead of having new equipment, knowing that, you know, there's a tight timeline on getting trucks ordered, and what the process internally would look like with that.
Great. I'll go ahead and jump in with mine. I would really like for us in the public to hear about how the new contract, coupled with the changes in the policy environment, are going to advance the goals of our ESAP, particularly around compost and compost in adoption in multifamily housing around our city. I think it'd be important to touch on the health of the Cedar Hills landfill that our garbage would be going to, and to understand that. And along with the other questions about the experience of the resident, particularly when it comes to plastics, whether or not there will be changes or not in what the definition of recyclable is. Our city obviously continues to support comprehensive recycling reform through the RAP Act and whatever will come in this next legislative session, but for the moment, the definition of what can be recycled depends on the market that you're in. And I believe those are all of my questions. Again, lots to celebrate here. The first dump truck arrived in my neighborhood at 5:19 yesterday morning, and that will not be possible under the new contract, so looking forward to that. All right. Seeing no other questions, it looks like we're good to go on this item, so we'll see you back later in the month.
Great.
Thank you. The final item on our agenda is the quarterly update on the current CIP projects. This is an informational item. It looks like we will have Director Burt and Deputy Director Garcia back with us. Council received the packet. Should I just go ahead and open it up to questions, or do you have an introduction?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I know we're at time, but happy to answer any immediate questions or take your questions and respond via email afterwards.
Great. Who would like to kick us off?
No questions are great as well, so just let us know.
I'll go ahead and kick us off then with a question on the Evans Creek relocation. Can we hear a bit more about what's going on with the easements?
In terms of us seeking the easements?
Correct. So on the slide, this is on page 456 of our packet, I can go there momentarily. It says the easement acquisition is ongoing, and offers have been made to all impacted properties. I had an assumption, I guess, that these would have kind of been wrapped already. So, you know, anyway, just a status update on that would be helpful, learning more.
Yeah, it's not a deal breaker for us right now. Majority of the properties that we have for the Evans Creek relocation are within the public domain. There are a few private properties, it's just in the final negotiations of those easements. All the indications from those property owners are that the easements will be granted. This is just a component where we're negotiating the final dollar amount or access. So it's not a deal breaker at all.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Council President Kritzler.
Apologies that I have so many logistical issues to raise today, but I just wanted to say, I think this is great to be able to read through. I do miss when we used to have this information delivered as a staff report, just because I think there's a lot of really good information for us to be able to surface up in here about what's being built, what's going on in our city, how our public dollars being put to use. So it's something that I'll follow up with the mayor and COO files on, just as we kind of look at scheduling going forward, because I think this is a really important report. And appreciate all the work the staff is doing to achieve all of our goals on the CIP. Thank you.
And just real quick to address that, that is normally going to be our intent, but because of the budget cycle and the preparation for some of those components, and knowing that we would be briefing you next week on the proposed CIP, we made the decision to do it this way. But for the third quarter and the end of the year update, it will definitely be that staff report.
Perfect. Thank you. That makes a lot of sense, and looking forward to that budget discussion.
Yep.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Just a quick question on Northeast 70th Street improvements. When are we going to be opening that? Do you have an estimate?
No.
Okay.
And the reason why I'm adamant about that is actually, we're in a situation right now where we need to seriously rethink that project because of some difficulties that we're running into with a property owner, and whether or not it makes sense for us to continue down the road that it was originally scoped at. So we are working some options, and before we pursue any change to that project, if we change the scope, we definitely bring it back to council for concurrence on that.
Okay, interesting. Good to know. Let us know if you need an executive session, we're always here for you. And I would ask that in the meantime, if that's going to be prolonged, we look at some of the timing of the light of that intersection for the folks trying to leave Whole Foods in that area with all that construction. It gets super backed up, I'm sure you're aware.
It does. I sat in it this morning, waiting to leave Blazing Bagels. And so it is something that's on our radar, and a big portion of that is waiting for the other construction
Yeah.
in that corridor to finish, so we can get those lights synced, and that's actually going to be part of our adaptive signaling project.
Yeah, looking forward to talking about that one later.
Yep.
Thanks.
Other questions from the council?
Well, I have a couple more. I'll submit via email, just for the sake of time. But I did want to thank the team for integrating so many of our thoughts on the feedback and into the design of these reports and whatnot. Really appreciate that. I, yeah, I have a few questions, I'll follow up by email, just given the time. Council will be back at 7 o'clock, and we've got three big juicy staff reports tonight, so join us again if you're so inclined. Thanks again, everyone. We are adjourned.
Great, thank you.